We like it because he has some background.
Yeah, I have.
Yeah, so my question is.
Oh.
I know.
Yeah, I think like we have been here.
Based on order.
But it's a minute.
Yes.
So I'll.
Okay.
I have a question.
No, I have one.
They're to me, yeah.
Actually.
Well, I guess I heard.
I don't remember.
He's.
Yeah. Well, it's on the schedule.
Not surprised, but you just keep seeing them. I don't know what to do.
I did not talk.
What's your?
No. Not yet.
I'm feeling a little spicy. Connecticut.
Kind of just.
Okay.
See how she reacts in public settings, but I think I would get in deep trouble. Playing chair against me. Maybe Gary wants to come with me.
Where are we going?
You're gonna come and sit with me on the seventeenth. Hold hands.
Is that the schedule? No, or I mean that?
No, it's the meetings with council members. You probably, you have a busy schedule. I'll believe.
I will do it. I know.
Deb's gonna do it. Open house, yep, for. All for me.
Oh, that's how they do it, isn't it?
Come on, pretty sure.
Okay, I think I.
Deb's gonna do it.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah.
I will, I will schedule to do it.
Deb's gonna be there meeting.
Oh, yeah, that's fine. He told me about that.
Pete, I could see the only person here.
Yep, yeah, because yes, no problem.
Might have to have a. GD driver. Yeah.
I thought it was good if we had nine people.
I had to come.
You have a minute to spare.
Oh, barely.
You did it.
Fresh off the highway.
Were you speeding?
No.
He's just a law-abiding citizen.
No, I was not speeding. I was going the agreed-upon seven miles over the street event.
Because.
They agree.
We take bylaws and then.
But I'm ears off, so I probably know.
Yeah. By seven miles.
Yes.
Now, I gotta use it or lose my vacation. It's like, wow. You don't, don't lose it, you just don't accumulate anymore.
That's loose.
Yeah.
You saw it.
Yeah, it's loose, yeah. Like, okay, this is the only weekend that's pretty much open. Like I say.
But they don't.
Fill in in my calendar at four o'clock in the morning. And that's after two cups of coffee.
It's a lot of public hearings. Yeah, look at that. Let's call the city council meeting of November fourth, twenty twenty-five to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, let entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Looking to then, uh, motion for a consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'd like to move into the mayor's comments in open forum. It looks like just Deb. Please state your name and address and take a couple of minutes and share your comments.
Deb Olsen, six hundred Dewey Street. Um, I posted on Facebook, the Foley community meeting place, about reviewing an individual's water bill, which raised a lot of questions. I posted that because other people had asked me about why the sewer part was so much higher than the water part. And, um, and then after speaking with Sarah, she called me after seeing the post and I did the disclaimer about how, you know, it's not reflecting on the city, making an inaccurate billing and further questions to direct them to the city. But the issue is, what percentage actually is looking at, um, hydrant for their lawn sprinkler systems be versus this, uh, winter water rates? And then the second part of that is, people have asked me what kind of seeding is gonna be put down on the Northside project, only because with the increased water rate, they are not gonna want to water the newly seeded grass because then they're gonna have a large water bill, not just the sewer bill. So if you wanna reflect on that.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Sounds like we took some notes. Everyone else was crossed off.
I think they were on the Northside, so I just.
Oh, sure, okay. Um, I'll, I'll make a comment. Uh, we had the, uh, first of what I would expect to be many. Kind of council, uh, you know, come meet with us, share your vision, your thoughts and such on Friday. Deb and I got some great feedback and some great comments. Uh, I think we had seven in attendance, uh, and so thank you for that, that time. We have another one.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, okay? Um, and for, as far as clarity goes, it sounds like maybe, uh, the paper, paper might have, uh, mentioned that all of council will be there. This first go-around, we will not all be there. It'll just be two of us, uh, as we were trying to avoid quorum. I don't think that will, uh, that's not how all of them will be. I think we heard some feedback, how some would like to see that. So as we just dip our toe in the pool, uh, and understand how we can get in front of more folks, uh, throughout the city and hear just general feedback, comments, uh, vision and otherwise about the city. Uh, this is just kind of the start of that, as we experiment what that looks like. And so I look forward to different opportunities, different dates, different times. Maybe opportunities for all five of us, uh, maybe opportunities with just council with no, um, I'll call it, uh, support uh, from the city, uh, to allow, um, different kinds of conversations to happen. And so, again, thank you for those that came to the first one. Look forward to attendance for the second one. And, uh, and we, of course, will be sharing that feedback and those comments from those meetings uh, as we continue to, uh, work for the greater good of the city and, and see where it takes us. Uh, so, again, thank you for that. Anything else? Uh, we are going to move into number six. We have quite a few public hearings today. So with that, I will close the city council meeting at five thirty-five PM and open then the public hearing, the CUP variance site plan for the LEI Packaging LLC at five thirty-five PM. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, um, I did provide comments from MINDOT in your packet. Did you guys all receive those?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. I had no concerns. I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Right, yeah, as far as the gravel road and, or gravel parking lot and such goes and the off the highway.
And the setback.
Yep, setback, yeah, yep. All right, hearing none, so we will reconvene the regular city council meeting at five thirty-six PM. From there, we'd entertain a motion for adopting resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine approving the conditional use permit, setback variance and site plan for, of LEI.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to item number seven. Will we be hearing from Amanda Othout first prior to recessing?
Yeah.
Uh, so Amanda Othout, uh, please come to the podium and, uh, Amanda Othout's from the BEP and she will do an overview of the request of LEI.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, Amanda Othout with, uh, the Executive Director at Benton Economic Partnership. Um, in your packet this evening, you have, uh, the memo that was, uh, delivered to the Economic Development Authority. Um, you also have a resolution in front of you. I'm just gonna give you kind of a brief overview of the project again for, um, the general public and then also for council that was, uh, not in attendance at the Economic Development Authority. So, um, in front of you this evening, you have a proposed project by LEI Packaging, um, LLC, who plans to procure, uh, manufacturing equipment and invest in facility expansions at, uh, three four seven Glenn Street in Foley, Minnesota, which is the, um, former Kent Foods, um, building. Uh, the company is seeking support from the Minnesota Investment Fund, uh, to help finance the sustainable manufacturing initiative. Um, and, uh, just a little bit of background on the company. Uh, they were founded in twenty thirteen in Chisago City. Um, that's where they currently reside, um, and operate their facility today. Um, they are a leader in sustainable molded fiber packaging solutions from recycled materials. Um, essentially, they manufacture egg curtains, um, which is what they will be doing, um, or proposing to do at the facility here in Foley. Um, they, um, have kind of a sustainable operation. Um, Sarah Braun and I, um, visited the facility about a month ago and, uh, took a look at their operations in Chisago City and, um, they have a really nice manufacturing facility there and it's very clean and sustainable and you can definitely, um, see that uh, they've made a lot of really awesome strides in, um, reducing waste, um, for their, through their processes. Um, part of their process involves, um, uh, expanding their operation lines. Um, and the facility in Foley, uh, seems to be the facility that would make the most sense to them to expand their operations and build out a production line, if you will. So the Minnesota Investment Fund application that they have submitted to Benton Economic Partnership on behalf of the city um, is, uh, to request forgivable loan funds to help them finance the operation and the, and the production line for their, um, plant here in Foley, Minnesota. That, uh, facility, um, it's an existing facility, of course, a thirty thou, a thirty-six thousand fifty-square-foot building. Um, they plan to expand the facility, um, by just under thirteen thousand square feet, which, um, you heard earlier, uh, on the screen, uh, previous line item in the agenda packet talked about, um, their approvals needed for their land use applications. Uh, their facility, their new facility will be outfitted with the advanced equipment, um, including forming and pressing stations, um, proprietary detrashing and pulping system and a hundred and twenty-foot natural gash, natural gas impigment dryer and robot, robotic stacking systems. So that's how their line is made up, their production line. Um, LEI Packaging plans to create twenty-five new jobs over the next one to two years um, as a result of the expansion and the, um, equipment upgrade and the new line. Their average hourly wage is roughly thirty-two dollars an hour because they have to hire not only production staff but, um, office and, um, plant managers as well. So their average hourly wage is roughly thirty-two dollars an hour. Um, the facility will be owned by LEI Enterprise Properties and leased to LEI Packaging. Um, Rice Companies, um, present this evening, is leading the expansion, um, and various equipment partners are supporting the machinery installation. So, again, as I mentioned earlier, the company is seeking support from the Minnesota Investment Fund to help finance a sustainable manufacturing initiative. Their total investment in building and equipment during the first phase of this project totaled roughly twelve point four million dollars. Um, they are seeking four hundred and fifty thousand in forgivable, uh, MIF, Minnesota Investment Fund, um, money from the Department of Employment and Economic Development. Um, part of the application, um, reveals that, you know, the city, essentially how it works, how MIF works, is if approved this evening, um, the city of Foley, um, well, I should say, the application goes to the state for their final approvals, right? They've, um, provided it moves forward this evening, it'll go to the state. The state will review the application and decide whether or not to fund it, um, later this week. Um, provided all that happens, um, then the city of Foley will enter in an agreement with the state of Minnesota, the Department of Employment and Economic Development. Um, the state will lend the city those funds to lend back to the company. So we are essentially, the city is essentially intermediary between those funds and the state of Minnesota and the company. Um, with that, there's also a loan agreement that will be, um, worked out between the, the city and the company. So not only do you have a contract with the state, but also with the company and, and the city. So, um, that's essentially very high level of how that process works. Um, there's, uh, we've been doing a lot of background information, a lot of backwork on this project. Um, and just, you know, to move things along and hopefully still get them in the ground this year. So, uh, with that, uh, there's another couple of considerations. I know, um, with the loan agreement, um, there may have been some questions about, you know, what happens if the company, um, fails to meet the guidelines and the criteria offered in the contract and the loan agreement. Um, essentially, the city of Foley, um, remains that intermediary between, um, the company and the state to collect those funds if there needs to be some sort of clawback, um, of, uh, those funds to the state. So essentially, those are the elements of the MIF application. I'm gonna, uh, instead, open it up for questions and comments from you and then obviously you can open up the public hearing.
I have no problem. After reading all the criteria and the background that I've seen, I think it's a pretty suitable operation that we should go this route.
Both, uh, the EDA and the Planning Commission, thanks to Amanda, explained it to us most fabulously. We don't have any issues and we both, both entities feel it's, uh, a great step for the city of Foley.
Great.
And I think maybe just to ensure, uh, community understands as well, uh, there is no, uh, liability to the city with regards to MIF. The city is not paying this MIF loan.
No, that's correct. It's, um, uh, it's funds received by the state of Minnesota to the city. Um, and in turn, the city is the intermediary between the company. So the only obligation that the city would have potentially would be if the company didn't meet the criteria, the job creation, the investment, um, that if they received any funds, they would have, um, the ability to clawback some of that money. Um, and they would work in partnership with the state of Minnesota.
Good. If nothing else, uh, thank you, Amanda. Again, to EDA. Good, uh, good project to have in our community. Uh, we love to see our, uh, empty buildings get filled with quality, uh, businesses. So with that, then I will open up to the public hearing. So we will now recess the regular city council meeting at uh, five forty-six PM to conduct the public hearing on the Minnesota Investment Fund's application request of LEI. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Hearing none. We will reconvene the regular city council meeting at five forty-seven PM. And I would entertain a motion of adopting resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine approving the application to the state for MIF funding for LEI Packaging LLC.
So all moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Moving into item number eight, uh, the public hearing, uh, for the twenty twenty-five Northside Improvements, the final assessment hearing. Assuming we're gonna have you maybe present some information first, okay?
Correct. My name is Mr. Mayor, members of council. Um, tonight, as you mentioned, uh, we're here for our final assessment hearing for our two thousand twenty-five Northside Street improvements. Uh, first, I want to just go through a little bit of project scope, uh, a little bit of project costs and then kind of the assessment policy and where we sit with our assessments. First being project scope, um, this project consisted of replacing, uh, reconstructing our roads up for Third Avenue from John Street to Murphy. Fourth Avenue from the Sony Brook Creek Box Culvert on, um, on the south side of the highway up to the Norman Avenue intersection. Um, Broadway Avenue from the highway to Penn Street, um, and then Murphy and Parent Street in between those two corridors, or those three corridors. Um, the project also consisted of an overlay over on Thirteenth Avenue and then we added, um, kind of during construction, an overlay of John Street between Third and Fourth. Uh, this project, um, when we came and presented this for our preliminary and our feasibility study, um, well over a year ago, the project numbers that we discussed at that time, um, consisted of a construct, a city construction cost of roughly three point, three point eight million dollars, um, with a total construction cost of four point eight million dollars. Um, total project cost for the city was about five point one million and a total project cost for the entire project was about six, six and a, six point five nine. Um, on the bottom, the bottom there, there's a table showing what we are projecting our final costs to be. Um, and they are three point nine million for a city constru, this construction side. Um, that number, just looking at comparing the two numbers there in the tables, um, that number's a little higher. Um, that's because when we presented this feasible base study, uh, we did not include Thirteenth Avenue. And so we, as we talked about, that Thirteenth Avenue was gonna be about two hundred K, plus or minus. Uh, but the overall, overall project cost for the city, um, is, is, they go down from that five point one to the four point eight. And a total project cost went down from a, um, the five, the six point five down to a, it's roughly six million. Um, jumping into our final assessment process, uh, policy and process, um, the slide on the screen shows the parcels that were assessed on this street project. Basically, they're essentially all the abutting properties that, that benefited from our, our improvements, um, minus there's the, the one-off to the side there, uh, on, on the highway there that, um, the medical clinic that had, uh, their services were completed with destruction as well. So that's why they're not, not exactly abutting, but they're, they were benefited by this project. So that's why they were being assessed. Our, the city's assessment policy is essentially, um, split up into two, two different kind of subgroups. Surface improvements and then subsurface improvements. The surface improvements, in this case, is basically your street and your alley, um, those are assessed based off of a front footage. Um, and how that works is you, you kind of take the total, total estimated project cost for those surface improvements and, and then you divide it by the number of, the, the front footage, the total front footage for each parcel. Um, thirty percent of that total, of that total project cost, like, street is considered assessable and, and the remaining seventy percent is a city cost. Same thing for the subsurface. So this includes your water main and sanitary sewer. So both of those are based off of front footage and it's the same concept as far as total assessable project cost is thirty percent and the remaining seventy percent is the city cost. The water and sanitary services are based per lot. And the storm sewer is based off the drainage area of the property. At a previous council meeting, we set our assessment payment term, which was a twenty-year term, at a five percent interest, um, for, for this four point nine statute and for the, um, same setup. Um, interest repayments or prepayments and partial payments can be made up to thirty days after the, the assessments have been approved and then the remaining balance goes on to your annual taxes. Getting into where we sit for our assessments, getting into some numbers here. Again, we're kind of showing what we showed in the preliminary versus the final, um, breaking it out per, per category as far as, so the first one here is street. Um, the total estimated street costs, uh, in our preliminary were three point four million. Of that, um, one point, one point six was a city cost and six hundred eighty-five K were, were to be assessed. Uh, in our final, we are sitting at two point, two point nine, uh, three million for our, uh, total project costs for street. One point four million for city costs and five hundred and thirty K for total assessments. Um, below that is our storm sewer. Again, we have, um, total, total, in our preliminary assessment, we had seven hundred and sixty-three thousand for our total storm sewer costs. Um, of that, three hundred and sixty-five K was going to be a city cost and then a hundred and fifty-six was going to be a assessable cost. In our final, um, we're showing that, that those total costs went down from, went down to a total of seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Um, three hundred and fif, three hundred and forty-five K was the city cost and a hundred and twenty-six is the assessable cost. These two are similar to the last, last slide as far as the two other categories we have for, uh, our assessment policy. Sanitary sewer cost, which includes the main and this, and this services as well. Um, those, our preliminary had eight hundred and seventy thousand, eight, sorry, eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand for a total cost in uh, preliminary numbers. Um, six hundred and twenty-eight of that wa, were the city costs and two ninety-six, two ninety-six thousand were the assessable costs. For our final numbers, we have seven hundred and four thousand for our total cost. Five hundred and fifty-four thousand for city costs and four hundred, sorry, one hundred and, one hundred and fifty thousand for our assessable cost. Water main, this includes the water main and water services. The preliminary numbers, we had Rock Fork, were one point, uh, one point two million total cost for water main, or water ser, water. Uh, eight hundred and eighty, eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand of that was the, a city cost and. $889,000 of that was the city cost and $380,000 of that would have been an assessable cost. In our final numbers here, we have 1.8, or sorry, 1.5 million for the total project cost. And then the estimated city cost was 1.2 million. Why that went up was due to the cost of our jack and bore operations across. That unit price was higher in our bidding numbers than what we had in our feasibility study. So, that's the cost that went up, or why that number went up. The 2.8, or 281,000 is the estimated assessment cost for the water. So, as you can see, that went down. Like the last little bit here is our the private sanitary sewer work. As you guys are all aware, the city has an ordinance that states that if a property is on the, has been identified as they have a defective service, they have, essentially, when a street project comes along, they have up until the project is completed to get that service in compliance with the city ordinance. They can either choose to do that within the project, they have the city, they have the city's contract to do that, or hire their own contractor and do it themselves. But those assessments are based off of per lot. And these were, these were assessed at a hundred percent of the construction cost. Our preliminary numbers were roughly $155,000 for private sanitary sewer work. Total came in $152,000. $124,000 of that was assessed to property owners. And then $28,000 was the city cost. Any questions on that? Next slide kind of shows what we have then for essentially calculating the assessments. As I mentioned before, it's, you determine a rate by the total project cost or the total assessable cost divided by whatever the unit of measurement is. You know, in most cases, it's front footage, but sometimes it's per lot or, like it's storm, it's the area of the property. And so, this slide shows, you know, as we kind of demonstrated with the previous slides of our, of us going down from our preliminary to our final into a cost, our rates are also what I'm on to, right? This slide shows, shows that, where the, everything on the left is our final rates. And then in parentheses on the right, excuse me, were our preliminary rates. Looking at those, they all go down except for the alley. Alley went up because when we, in our preliminary numbers, again, we didn't, did not have that further south alley included there. That was something that was added half of the fact, right? In that portion, there's a little more concrete work than the other two. That is a smaller factor, but the bigger factor essentially is when we, when we took out the storm sewer costs in the alleys and then added curb, that kind of, that project cost, even though it was less, as far as the, comparing the storm versus the curb, it changes kind of what category it goes into, right? It goes into alley versus it wasn't storm. So, it's a kind of a shell game, I guess, but it's, those are the two reasons why the alley is a little higher. Any questions on the, on the rates? No? Okay. The next two slides are just showing examples of, of, you know, calculating someone's assessment. Just very, very generic lots, an eighty by twenty, or sorry, eighty by a hundred and twenty lot, the four inch sanitary service and a four inch sanitary water service. Yeah, you take your front footage. In this case, if it's an interior lot, it'd be normally your eighty foot. So, it's eighty foot times the rate gives you that ten grand for street assessment. Eighty foot by the rate for the sanitary gives you the sanitary, and so on and so forth. As you work your way down, that is how a typical lot is calculated for their assessments. I think you guys have all seen the really small, the FAW, the assessment roll, where it shows all the properties on the one side and breaks it up per column. Essentially, each column is that calculation. And then the second slide is showing a corner lot. The difference between the corner lot and the interior lot is when you calculate your street assessment, the surface assessment, it is the full short side plus half the long side is how that works. And then your subsurface calculation only accounts for the short side. So, if the, you know, if the long side was, was where the main actually was, it'd only be assessed for the short side. Does that make sense? The last slide I have is just showing, again, the estimated total project costs for this project are 2025 Northside Improvements. The preliminary, preliminary city cost was roughly $3.5 million with $1.6 million in assessments. And the total project cost was $6.5 million. Our final, $3.6 million for city estimated costs, and the assessment was $1.2 million with a total project cost of just a little bit over $6 million. So, with that, I'll open up any questions you may have. If you don't have any, then I can, I'll go sit down and open the public hearing.
Well, it's good to hear that everything was cheaper.
Right.
What was the estimated percentage as far as assessments go from originals to actuals?
The difference?
Right, ballpark percentage.
I guess I don't have. Yeah, but I.
Per property, I'm sure, is obviously different, but average between that fifteen and twenty percent, which is favorable. Good. Any other questions from council before I open it up to the public hearing? Specifically around what he explained. Hearing none. Thank you Jared. I will open up item number eight, the public hearing for the Northside Improvements. We will now recess the regular city council meeting at 6:02 PM to conduct the public hearing on the 2025 Northside Improvements. There are some folks that are here to speak on behalf of this public hearing. And so, I will call you up by name, and then please enter the podium, state your name and address, and take a couple of minutes to tell us your comments. Russ Jerk?
Good evening. I'm Russ Jerk, 431 Fourth Avenue. I didn't realize we'd have a time limit on this, so I'll have to cut what I was gonna mention. I haven't been up here complaining or whatever about this all summer, because I trust that our council was gonna do good things for us because we are the city. But as we get towards winter now, you know, I'm seeing things that didn't get completed and they're still working out there. One night, I thought they packed up and took all the spent work away. Today, I got a driveway. I can't drive out of it because my yard is gouged. I think that was one of the biggest things that bothered me is all these yards that gouged, got gouged out so bad. I'm not really sure, I guess for lowering the sidewalk, but it's bad. And like, I didn't have to put water or sewer line through my yard, but it's still, it's gouged out, you know? You work on these yards for years and then they just get tore up like that. Another big issue that I think approaching winter, our alley was really tore up by the people who put the new gas lines in. I mean, part of it is almost undrivable, but we've had to use that all summer. And now we're going into winter and we're hoping something gets done. Because they basically put sand in those holes, and they were patched up a little bit, but they're just not. There's like six inch holes, eight inch holes, and it's, you know, you don't have a way to avoid them. One other thing, I have tree trunks in my yard that weren't taken out because the trees were cut down after the project was started. But the main thing here is now with the assessment. Now, he said everything was by lot, everything else. So, I don't really know, reading this sheet of paper, and I'm sure most of you can't read this sheet of paper. It's very poorly designed for the average people. I took a magnifying glass out and I still struggle to see with these figures. And I guess the question is, was I assessed for a new water line, a new sewer line? I don't know where to look on here for that. And at the beginning of the project, they said I had to do a correction, but I didn't. So, I don't know if I got charged for that if that was taken off my finger. This isn't a very thorough explanation of the assessment for individual. That's all I have.
Thank you. Kuko?
Yeah, I'm there.
Say that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Chris, staying? Okay. Lynn, Lynn Peterson?
Good evening. I'm Lynn Peterson, 401 Third Avenue North. I guess I probably will just echo what that speaker said, that, you know, it's expected that the assessment is to be, you know, paid for when the work is not completed. It's our property that we own, but we do rent it to our daughter. But I just talked to her and they can't get in the driveway again, which has been the majority of the, of the time, which they, the way the property is, they've had to park across Highway 23 and, you know, cross with their daughter with all the luggage and groceries. And it's been quite a, quite an interesting affair for them. But, you know, they went and they, they dealt with it. But now, again, like I say, going into winter, the whole sidewalk on, on Third Avenue is completed except in front of our property. And so, we're just wondering, are they gonna have to go through the winter like that? Right now, they can't drive into it. So, I guess that's the main concern, and, and the yard is completely obliterated. So, just wondering, it seems like it's completed as the assessment is being talked about, but the work isn't completed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Go ahead and enter to the podium, state your name and address, and take a couple minutes and share your comments.
Yes, small, 431 Third Avenue. I agree with other speakers, but my main thing I want to talk about, lessons learned. Some of these contractors were good to work with, some left much to be desired. Personally, I used sixteen hours of vacation with appointments made to work with the contractor. They never showed up. I had one contractor threaten me for not working with him because I refused to leave my house unlocked. They they always, they want to talk to you at, you know, six o'clock in the morning, sorry, nine o'clock in the morning, ten o'clock in the morning. Most people work for shift jobs. And then, you know, I understand some destruction, I understand some, you know, conflict. Some contractors worked well with it, others didn't. I'm in the same boat. Hopefully, get in the driveway next week, hopefully get a sidewalk next week. It just floored me, the contractor told me to leave my house unlocked. And when I told him I was not gonna lock, he got very disgruntled and told me I refused to work with him, and there's nothing he can do.
Thank you. Do you have a name?
Pardon?
Do you have a name, who you talk to?
Matricians. Name I don't have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak for or against this matter?
Yes. I'm also on Broadway Avenue North, 520 Broadway Avenue North. And I have the exact same concerns, to say the least. I can't get in and out of my driveway. I do now have sidewalk. I have forms to hopefully put so I can get in and out of my yard. And I'm just not sure. It's, it's not looking promising, and it's frustrating to have that day in and day out and not know, well, we're gonna get here next week and do this. And there have been enough times I've seen them say that, and it hasn't been able to. And I'm, I know weather isn't always friendly, but it has been a mixed bag. Yeah, it's very difficult to talk to anybody. And it's been frustrating in that manner. And I can be home anytime of day. So, it has been a frustration. I'm, that's, I just want to say I'm
Thank you. Good.
Fighting the same thing.
Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? This public hearing will be continued. We need a motion to continue this hearing to this coming Friday, November 7th at 8:00 AM.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second the motion. Motion's been made and seconded to continue this hearing to Friday, November 7th at 8:00 AM. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Post same sign. Motion carries. We will now reconvene the regular city council meeting at 6:12 PM. Now, we can move on to any discussion on the special assessment deferral policy. Is that something you're gonna speak to?
Yeah, I can speak to that. Mr. Mayor and Council, we're providing this deferred special assessment policy based on some requests we received. If there was an option to defer, state statute does allow for a deferral if certain conditions are met over the age of sixty-five, and then there's a military, it's listed in the policy. And so, this is up to the council's discretion if they wish to implement a policy. We provided a sample just based on getting some requests from people on the project for this. They would have to apply and obviously meet certain conditions in order to be granted a deferral. A couple of things I'll also mention is, the deferral can happen, but the city still has to pay the bonds and make their obligations. So, it doesn't change the responsibility for those payments to be made and make sure our debts are taken care of. And then, there would be some administrative work to do that deferral. If somebody applies, we'd, we'd obviously do the processing to see if they qualify and then managing that deferral. Because there's certain conditions that have to be met before the deferral comes off, like somebody passes away or their financial situation changes, so forth. So, it's, it's an option available to you. The attorney did help me with this policy, so I also have him here today too as well if you have questions. Is there anything that I missed kind of summarizing it?
There are two components in here that are pretty typical on these policies. The council gets a fair amount of discretion, but you have that income threshold and an asset threshold that if somebody has obviously a significant savings, they're, they're not basically borrowing on the city's dime to have, for the city to cash all that. So, there's not a hard and fast rule on those. So, the model in front of you is kind of consistent with what other area communities who have a policy have utilized.
You mentioned the two criteria. The other one is age, is it not?
Correct. And so, that is a requirement out of the state statute. But where you set that income and asset, state statute doesn't set that. You have discretion. And so, you know, we wanted to bring something that was kind of consistent with what other communities are doing to give you that perspective.
Sure. And that age requirement is a minimum age of sixty-five?
Yeah.
Okay. I did provide the poverty levels in a separate sheet there on your council spot if you're curious what those are. And it's based on your household size. And it's based on your household size.
To ask, is that something that we would be deciding in this moment? Or something we have time to decide on?
If you want to include this role, we probably should make a decision by Friday. Because those assessments need to be turned in to the county by November thirtieth. So, we will need to have a decision before then. Unless you know of an extension, I don't know of any other.
No, you, you would need to have the policy in place before you adopt this or at the same time as you adopt the assessment.
Okay.
Do we have any idea how many assessments we're talking?
Well, first of all, they have to apply.
Yep.
And our best guess, maybe around fifteen people could qualify. That was kind of just roughing the little we know about people, we don't know their specific financial conditions obviously, but like, age-wise, that's kind of what we were going off of. Just guessing. I wouldn't anticipate everybody would apply though.
Sure. But to your point, city still has to make its payment obligations
Yeah.
monthly, annually, so we can dictate the threshold of how long it's deferred.
We can.
Yeah.
I mean, we wouldn't want it to be deferred longer than the bond.
Right.
Yeah, we can put that requirement on and that's all part of it, you know, what the council's comfortable with. I, they put in their interest too, I believe, in the policy. You know, there's different ways you can have them pay interest to keep that current or you can defer it all. It's up to you.
Right.
And the, the trigger for repayment is somebody selling the property or passing away, then, then that would trigger the repayment, so. The other thing with these that's really important is if the city does decide to do this, you're going to want to record evidence in the title so that subsequent owners are aware of this. In other communities, we've had that fall through the cracks and that creates a real mess for, for everybody.
And just as far as examples go, say it's deferred for twenty years, year ten, they sell the property, are they only obligated to, to pay back or pay up to years one through ten and then the new owners take over from, we'll say, eleven through twenty? Or are they obligated to pay the entire deferred amount?
A buyer and seller can negotiate that. I would say the typical scenario in the market is that the seller provides the property free and clear of assessments. And so, that is typically, you know, those sale proceeds oftentimes are used to, to clear out those assessment amounts.
Okay, but only what, only what up to has been deferred tha- at that point? Right? I mean, there's still the rest, the remaining deferred.
You, you would defer the, the whole amount, there'd be interest if you choose to do that. So, whatever remaining principal and interest is out there would have to be paid.
So the new homeowner wouldn't just pick up the assessment from?
We don't usually see that.
Okay.
If, to be honest, most of them get paid off.
Okay.
Maybe if the certain economic conditions change, that might change, but usually we see, if we're in the middle of an assessment, more times than not, the seller takes care of it, it's all free and clear to the new buyer.
Okay.
Not always, but most of the time.
Sure.
Mark, didn't we do this on Carpenter Street? There, I know there was a deferment on the property next to me. I don't remember doing this ever again.
There, I think there's another, like a tax deferment option.
There, there is a deferment for vacant or undeveloped property. That's not tied to, you know, the age of the owner or anything. So, that, that is a possibility.
And I'll open it to council, is there any, I, I mean, would this be a motioned item?
You would have to adopt the policy if we were to allow for it, so yeah, I would need a motion to, to resolution. And like I said, you don't, you could wait till Friday to do that too, if you had any more questions or things you wanted us to get answers on, but we'd probably need to know for sure by Friday to include it.
But we're not all here Friday, correct?
Yep.
Or, or are we?
I have everybody here.
Oh, we are here all Friday, okay.
I'd like to defer it till Friday.
I would like to as well.
I would like to.
Research?
I would like you to, I know you ballpark some numbers, you know. Worst case scenario, it doesn't have to be exact, but, you know, for fifteen people, for how much it would be, it would be helpful.
Okay.
I mean, I think the average assessment is approximately fourteen thousand.
Yeah.
You know, so if you took, again, all fifteen people likely wouldn't
Right.
apply and/or be approved, you know, so even, even if you used a percentage of that, at fourteen thousand on average, that...
Five percent interest.
Five percent, right?
If they don't, if they pay it, it would be fine, you know, but yeah, you still have the interest.
We have the opportunity, we have the decision though whether they pay the interest or the interest is deferred
Yeah.
as well, right?
Correct.
And so there's opportunity there to understand what the, what we need to do as a city, because that is also gonna affect budgets, future budget planning, correct?
Yeah. I will also add to, if we do the deferral, I did speak to the county auditor's office and they have a new tax system that we either have to decide to put it on with no interest accruing or to put it on inactive status so it gets payments every other, every year with interest. So, if we do deferrals, we're gonna have to calculate them and, and certify them every year to the property owners. That's the only way that the county will accept it. So, that's also another thing, there's just an administrative kind of process that we'll have to go through every year with that.
Right, and, and to make sure that everyone's, from an education standpoint, if they defer and they don't, and they don't pay the interest, that is just going to rack up on the outstanding principal over that entire time. Where if they were making payments, right, you're paying down principal and interest. So if, if they didn't make at least the interest payments, it can be pretty sizable.
I, I was a little surprised when I found that out, 'cause I figured we could just sort of, at least certify the assessment out of the rule and then have it at least accrue interest, so interest would come on their property tax statements. And at least if you pay the interest, you're, you know it's still there, like this assessment is still there. I don't know if you have any other comments?
No, I, I think the, your comment about if, if interest does not accrue, yeah, suddenly then when these become payable, they're double over twenty years and then that's an even bigger challenge for people to, to work through sometimes.
Right, right.
And they'll come back here and ask for some type of, you know, that's what we would probably expect to see, 'cause it just won't be attainable here.
Okay, so it sounds like we'll pick this up on Friday when we are talking about extending this, this public hearing and decision at that time.
And if there are any other questions, let me know, we can get that, those answers for you.
All right, thank you. So, we are gonna move on to item number nine, the I and I assessments. We will recess the regular city council meeting at six twenty-four PM to conduct the public hearing on I and I unpaid charges. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Anyone present who wishes to speak for or against this matter? Hearing none, we will reconvene the regular city council meeting at six twenty-four PM. And then looking for a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-one assessing unpaid I and I surcharges.
I move to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty-one assessing unpaid I and I surcharges.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are moving on to item number ten, which is the department reports. Police Department, Chief Katie McMillan.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you received the stat report for the month of October. We had three hundred and eighty-eight calls for service. Some things to point out, equipment violations were up for traffic enforcement. Accidents were down. The child reports at the school were down, so kids are, must be getting back into the routine of school and not causing any trouble. And then we have medicals were down and thefts are back down to where we normally see them, so that's good to see that. And special events are up and that is due to, we had Halloween safety and Halloween events that we, that myself and other officers participated in. On Halloween, I spoke to a hundred and sixty different kids and, at St. John's and the public school about Halloween safety and how be safe that night. We passed our postboard audit, which you all have received the letter that they sent. That just, all our training is up to date, we are all current with everything we need to get done. All our policies that we are mandated to have, we have. And so, then they do that every three to five years, so. And then, our next event we have is Coco with a Cop, it's for ages kindergarten through third grade and December eleventh at Foley Elementary. That is all I have, oh, and our squad car is in Minnesota, it's down in the cities. They just have to take it through their shop to get, make, do the once-over, do a check on it and then it goes to get all the equipment installed. So, hopefully, I'm, hopefully by December first, we have it, so. With the holidays and people and deer hunting, you never know, so.
Our squads are in good shape now?
Yes, yep. Anything else?
No, I just wanna say we were very pleasantly surprised by Officer Kaufman on Halloween. He stopped us and gave us glow sticks.
Yes.
Adeline was over the moon, so please pass it along to him.
I will do so.
Great, thank you. Moving on to city attorney, Adam Rippel.
I do not have anything for you, but I'm happy to answer whatever questions you have for me.
Where are we with our two letters that were issued out for the nuisance violations?
We are working on complaints to file in court.
Have responded to them?
Uh, they have not been filed with the court yet, they'll get served when they'll get filed. They will then have twenty days to provide a response to the court. After that, the court will set a scheduling order and that whole process will initiate.
I think it's only one though, isn't it?
It, it is only one.
Yeah, one did comply, yeah.
So you, if he was to, if they were to comply, it could still be stopped before?
Sure, yep.
Okay.
Yep. But the action can be dismissed up until really the hearing?
Thank you, anything else for Adam? All right, thanks Adam. City engineer Jared Griffith has an update on the twenty twenty-five south side improve, south side or north side?
I don't have that one, so.
Okay, so, so probably the north side improvements. Okay, yep, north side improvements.
Yeah, good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I have two pay apps for your approval, first being the north side improvements. Kind of jumping into what we have here for our, our payout number five. Work certified to date is four million one hundred and one thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents, which represents roughly eighty-three, eighty-four percent of the project. The pay re, pay amount request on this payout itself for payout number five is, is for seven hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and three cents. This payout includes all street paving except for Broadway, but I was paid after the cutoff of this one. So that means that this payout also includes in some cut, the remaining concrete curb. And then all of the subsurface work, so the Broadway kind of services, mains, storm, so things like that that are included in this. Any questions on the payout itself? No, okay. As far as a brief schedule and project update, based off of a lot of the comments tonight, with winter coming up, people are concerned with where we're at with the project. Right now, as of today, the product, subcontractor for concrete is, is estimated they'll either be wrapping up tomorrow or Thursday as far as concrete work. The following week, we'll be back on site doing some prep work for the remaining Batumis driveways and, and kind of the, what we're calling the boulevards, if they get to them. And then paving towards the end of the week. Weather depending of course beyond what, I'm sure, see what the weather looks like. And after that, it's just kind of wrapping up yard grading, seeding, topsoil and street signs for, for this year. And we'll be spending work for the winter and come back next year and doing our final lift of Batumis. And that's been the plan since day one. Any questions on the project schedule?
So, it looks promising, sidewalk, driveways will be complete.
So I'm being told today, yep, that's their, that was their plan.
Will you have an update on Friday?
I, I could, yeah, if you want me to, if we wanna talk a little bit about the updates, yeah, sure. We can see where we're at, we're meeting eight o'clock, right?
Eight o'clock.
Yeah. I was gonna see if it's after our project meeting, but our meeting will be at ten, so, never mind. But I can talk to the guys beforehand, no problem.
I'm concerned about the yard work and the driveway.
Okay.
We'll see what happens Friday.
Sure.
Right, I, I mean, I, I echo that, I'm more concerned about sidewalk driveway, you know, being able to, right, park in your driveway during winter. Less worried about yard work. That's, that's, to me, that's an easy solve for next year if it, if need be, but I'm, I want people to be able to park in their driveways and be able to properly shovel and/or snow blow their driveways, et cetera, their sidewalks. You know, yards are less disruptive during the winter, it's covered with snow. So we think side, or concrete by the end of this week and then driveways by the end of next week?
Tend to be, as far as the Batumis paving portion of them, yeah, they find to be, have them prepped, ready to go for paving. Whether, that means towards the end of the week, if they can get that, that lined up for paving, yes, that's the plan.
That's in that alleyway we were talking about? Where they have sand?
Oh, no, 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 that's referring to, there's some driveways that have Batumis patches behind them. Not, not all their driveways are concrete, they're, for the most part, I think, they all have a concrete apron. But some of them depend on what the existing, you know, material they use for their driveway. Some of them have a concrete driveway that goes back to, up to the driveway or a Batumis. And it's those ones that will be left after this week, need to be addressed and patched. To your point though, as far as the alley patches, and I think you're referring, Russ, is he still here? No, I don't think so. His comment on the alley driveways, I assume that's the alley between third and fourth. Project staff, our team today met with Excel and we did talk about those patches. We have a game plan to address those, you know, we're, they're, for the most part, we have an idea which ones need to be addressed, but like our street project, we're, have the game plan of, let's give a free, free start cycle and if more show up next year, or the ones we patched this year get, you know, ruined again, let's just wait till the spring, we'll address them in the spring. So that's the game plan for those, that alley between third and fourth. They are aware that they have some patches that don't quite meet city standards. And we showed them which ones they were today, but we're gonna reevaluate those in the spring. And I think, Jason, I thought you commented as far as the contractors. I apologize for any, any, any of the experiences you have with the contractor, I think based off your comments, it sounds like it was from the lead service project standpoint, there's electrician, so that would have been lead service project. That's, that's definitely, definitely nothing that we wanna make sure, definitely something we don't wanna have. We wanna make sure that the contractors treat residents, and most importantly, the residents with utmost respect, so. We want to make sure that the contractors treat residents, most importantly, residents with utmost respect, so I apologize for that kind of experience you had.
If you would, Jared, just maybe share that with the contractor.
Yeah, we're, that, yeah, for the electrician for sure, we'll be in that conversation about that, so.
So you mentioned leveling, you know, yards and cleaning that up. Sounds like even seeding.
Yeah.
What about trees?
Trees will be, right now, projected to be planted in the spring.
Okay.
We're going to work through as our project team to determine the exact number and location.
Yep.
Kind of based off of where, you know, most importantly, where services were actually installed. So we'll get together as a team and hope to have work with city staff. Like we're still sitting at roughly forty-four.
And any disruption to the soil after seeding would be taken care of at that, as far as the trees being planted? What about, we have a lot, you mentioned signs, uh, street signs. What about lights, lights? Isn't there a lot of light poles or light posts that need to go up or is that all done?
Nope. No, we're always, they're keeping existing light poles in place.
Okay.
We're not having any new streetlights for this project. As far as your comment of seeding, basically leave that in the discretion of the contractor. They either do a, you know, either do a temp seed, they put that down. We're just kind of just basically getting some stabilization to meet their sweat requirements. Or they choose to think they can put down permanent seed and they'll grow, then they'll put that down. And like, at this time of year, it's probably more so of a dormant seed. And then that way when it doesn't germinate this fall, but then once they get that initial melt in the spring, it'll germinate then. Kind of leave that decision up to the contractor on which route they want to go.
Are the, are the temporary mailboxes actually going away tonight to be replaced tomorrow?
Last I heard, they will be onsite tomorrow to do that. I will confirm, I did confirm before the meeting tonight, so I apologize, but that was the talk at our office meeting last Friday, that they'll be onsite this week to do the, to install the mailboxes.
Because I haven't seen any motion.
I know they, they did their locates, so they.
Yes.
So they should be at least planning to be onsite this week. But I will confirm that and at least let the city staff know what the plan is.
I'll know by Friday's meeting.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, well, yeah, we'll let you know, keep it updated on Friday.
Would it be out of the ordinary that come spring and since they're still going to have some work to do around, would it be possible for the contractors to spray the seeding out of a truck?
To do?
With water.
Like this fall or in the spring?
No, in the spring.
Oh, you'd be starting watering the seed.
Yeah.
Depends on, I mean, there's requirements in our spec that, that need to be met as far as what the contractors should be as far as watering goes. I would say for the most part, they usually rely on mother nature to do, to do that. But there is some language in our spec that requires them to X amount of water a week type of a thing. I don't recall in the rough top of my head as far as how many inches of water per week, but ultimately, the, the grass needs to grow. We pay for it once and if it doesn't grow, we hunch its item and they come back and reseed it. And here's what it is, they're not going to, they're not going to close out the project until we have turf approval. That's usually the last thing, you know, it's always the last thing that truffles in, but, yeah.
You have questions? All right, so then are you, are you looking then for payout application number five?
Pay application, eh, well, payout application number five, approval tonight. For keep the, to keep that in mind.
Make motion, we pay the seven hundred and seventy-three thousand nine twenty-three oh three for application number five.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All on paper say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approves.
Thank you. The other payout tonight is for the twenty twenty-five lead service project. Work certified to date is two hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine, two hundred, sorry, two hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and ninety, hundred dollars, nine hundred and ninety dollars and zero cents. That represents roughly eighty-one percent of the project. We are essentially sitting on, everything on this payout has include, to my knowledge, that is, that was installed or completed is in this file, in this payout. So that's probably what, probably will be sitting as far as a final payout, other than paying off the retainage. We just still need to go through with the contractor to kind of verify the odds and ends of things, but I can't imagine it's going to be much more than what we're, where we're sitting. But with that said, this payout then, the request on this payout is for thirty-eight thousand fifty-eight dollars and ninety cents. Looking for a motion to approve that payout.
I'll make the motion that we make payment number four for thirty-eight thousand fifty-eight dollars and eighty cents.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All on paper say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
And with one last thing on this project, punch list that we're looking at right now is, for the most part, like we talked about turf establishment's the big one. So with that being said, we'll likely keep this open until the spring, just to make sure we have, such the last ones we did, we did some, last four we did, they were kind of late in the year. Make sure those are, the grass pops there, go from there, so.
And I think to echo Councilman Gondex's comment, if you would, come Friday with, you know, updates as far as where do we end with concrete? Where are we at with driveway? Where are we at with landscaping? I mean, that's, you know, that's, we'll call it forty-eight hours from now. I hate to request a recess, but I feel like I need to.
We're almost done.
I know.
Okay.
But I was, I was on the highway for two hours. I apologize. I know we're almost done. Trust me, I, I tried. Is there anything special I need to do except for just calling a recess?
Wash your hands.
Three to four, okay. Is that it? I'm recessing the meeting at six forty-two P M for five minutes. Thank you.
We'll leave a light on for you.